The Town of Crewe, Virginia, Regular Council Meeting July 13, 2015 is called to order. We will begin this evening with invocation and I will ask James Wilkerson from the Crewe Baptist Church to offer the invocation, please.
Praise be. Heavenly Father, we just are so thankful to be here tonight. We thank you for the councilmen and all the officials that are here tonight, whether it's be emergency rescue workers or whatever, police. We're so proud of them as they put in so many dedicated hours. We ask that you continue to give the wisdom to our leaders to bring this town to be what it can possibly be. And we just thank you for being here in Notaway County, the state of Virginia, and particularly in America where we have this particular right. We ask these in the name of Jesus. Thank you and amen.
Amen. I guess that those of you who are familiar with our procedures on our opening, that we needed due to rulings on the Supreme Court to change the way we open our meetings. And if any of you have a pastor or want to let Town Hall know that they would like, you know, you would like to open with the invocation we open it to, you know, our citizens and clergy and all religious groups in our community. Delegation from the public and citizens comments, do we have any?
I guess I do.
Well, we welcome you. Police, Fargie.
I'm here tonight to kind of let y'all know that we're getting ready to take delivery on a new truck in the next couple of months. It'll be excess of $435,000. And I understand that y'all had started up a savings account and I was kind of inquiring if somebody would y'all could let me know where it is if y'all tend to release some of those funds to help us pay for that truck on delivery. And not sure, I think in about another two to three months we'll be taking delivery of that truck. And the reason we got it, the reason we have ordered it is a 10-year rotation and it'll be replacing that 1985 truck that we've got in the barn hours now. So every 10 years we buy a Class A Humper and that's the reason we're doing it now is just rotation.
We thank you for all that you all do. I know last Friday evening with the power outage, you all were up there a long time, you know.
Some of those guys were prepared for by somehow.
Yes, yes, it's much appreciated and all the calls that you all make along with the rescue squad. You and the police and the rescue squad, you know, is an integral part of our community and we thank you.
We appreciate that. If there is somebody to let us know so we can help get the funds to pay for the truck. The truck will be paid for.
Town manager.
We got, I can't call exactly, Tiffany, you don't remember where it is exactly? Is it three years' work that we agreed to? So all you just call up there and let us know when you want. If council agrees, we're just reserved. While I got him, I'd like to thank the fire department. The truck that y'all gave us, I don't know the details that you do. That truck was in pretty good shape, had age on it, as you know. But y'all have seen our old green dump truck, green machine that's been around forever. We were having some serious issues with it and the fire department donated one of their trucks back to us and we've been able to retrofit that truck. We're going to pay it because you don't want to get confused riding around with.
Well, you can leave it red.
But I want to thank them for that.
Well, I think that truck had 21,000 miles on it. It's about 40 years old though.
Yeah, it did. That's one last dump truck that right now we hope we don't have to worry about, so thank you.
Any comments from the council? Okay, any other from our citizens? The consent calendar, matters on the consent calendars are considered routine and should be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and may be voted on separately. Included are the minutes of the regular council meeting held on Monday, June 8, 2015. The bill sheet and we received, as he arrived, an addition to the bill sheet of $22,645.25, which our previous bill sheet that we had in our packet was for $115,377.16. So what you are asking to be voted on is for a total of $138,022.41. So do I have any comments from the council?
Amendment motion with approved consent calendar presented with the additions.
Okay, we have.
Can I make one correction?
Yes, sir.
The bill sheet, I mean the addition, you said the hydro.
Yes, sir.
That was four.
The town manager has noted that the sender hydro repairs to a equipment was not for wastewater but for the water plant. So we have a motion to accept the $138,022.41. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in segment, all those affirmed, signify by the I. Any opposed, like sign? Okay, consent calendar passes. Town manager's report.
Thank you. I'm going to start out tonight. I don't normally like to read my report, but I don't want to miss anything. We've got some special guests with us tonight and I'm going to read what I've got here for everyone. We have two divisions in our town that oftentimes go unnoticed or forgotten because they're out of town and frankly, they operate on a no news is good news basis. That being our water treatment plant and our wastewater treatment plant. As all of you know, John Rico heads up, he's the chief operator in both of these facilities and he does an excellent job heading up these two. But I think he would be the first to tell you that he could not do it without his operators and the pride and dedication they take in their responsibilities. I think sometimes we take for granted the importance of these people and the huge responsibility they have to ensure that the health and safety of not only the citizens of the town, but our out-of-town customers, including teachers, insurance, Notaway Correctional, Crewe Primary, the Behavior Rehabilitation Center, and elderly patients as well as workers at Piedmont Geriatric. Sometime last year I reported that our water plant facility had received a silver award for excellent water quality and efficiency. I am pleased tonight to report that our water treatment facility has received a gold award in 2015 for outstanding service in water quality. I want to thank all these dedicated operators. John Rico, who is not here tonight because he's probably running the plant. Somebody has to be there. We do have with us tonight, I'd like you to stand if you would, Susan Queef. Susan's been with us since 1995, so she's. Matthew Coleman, yes, Matthew, you been here about three years now?
Yeah, three.
Yeah, three years, excuse me. Class two, three, working on it too, operator. And the newest and youngest, Thomas Watson, he resigned to training in February and he's doing an excellent job. I want to congratulate all of y'all for the work that you've done and the job we've done and the town, we're very proud of what you do and appreciate your hard work. This is the award that they received. It was presented to them by Department of Health. And I just want to thank you for that. Line away and I'll take the picture, all right? Yeah, y'all are the new citizens.
I was surprised. Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your hard work.
This, I could get in these pictures.
I got you, thank you.
Very appreciate you coming. You don't have to say.
Thank you.
Do a great job. I hope everybody appreciates what they did. Just a quick update on the sewer project that's going on. We had a progress meeting on July the 6th and it looks like things have progressed pretty well. The new force lane that you've seen going on in the alley over here between Pennsylvania and Maryland has been completed. It's actually operational, there's some cleanup work going on. They've got to fix the sidewalks and the ramps, but things are moving on pretty well. You've seen a lot of lateral point repair contractors working throughout the town and Tri-State Utilities is coming back in to finish off the lining. Project's still on schedule for September completion and right now I think the average completion percentage was eight percent, so moving right along. Wanted to let everybody know, you recall that the town with the assistance of HD LA Inc., that was the entity out of Lynchburg became to meet with us on a work session, to apply for a grant from the Department of Forestry to help fund a downtown master plan project to identify areas within the town where we can improve visual and information location such as construction of a kiosk with town information, the proposed crosswalk on 460, cross Hager and other aesthetic improvements like possibly the railroad museum entrance and the Welcome to Crewe silence. I want to report that the town received notification that we did receive that grant. We've been approved for $4,400. We're in the process of acknowledging the requirements of the grant and filling out the necessary paperwork as well as determining what match requirements are necessary. Hopefully in the way of in-kind work, we don't have to put forth any money. It may be necessary to do that and when we get a better figure on what's needed, of course, we'll be coming back to council to see how you want to progress with that. That is all I.
Any questions for the town manager? Town attorney.
Yes, thank you. And thank you all for your patience with me last month. I was at the beach, which was very nice and, oh, my husband's a farmer, so we really have like two weeks of the whole summer that we can go and one of those weeks just happened to be last meeting, so thank you all very much. I prepared a memo for you all again. Wade had told me that we had gotten some good feedback on that, so I'm going to start trying to do that every month and you all will be up today. Okay, good. And a lot of it is the same, you know, topics every month, so I'll just update you all on those topics. And of course, I'm not going to go over everything on them, but you know, just the highlights. And really, you know, Mutico working on recodifying the town code, including the zoning ordinance as our next step is to have a conference call or the town having a conference call with Mutico to get that done. Zoning ordinance, and this came to light when I was working on the, you know, reviewing for Mutico. And Mutico had actually pointed it out to a lot of provisions from the town zoning code needs to be updated, like most of them. So, you know, getting that together would be a good thing and perhaps with town council's permission and also working with the new kind of study committee that came together on the home occupations, if council would desire, I'd like to review and overhaul the zoning ordinance, bringing it up to date with Virginia code. And then I've been working on the zoning committee's proposal on improving the ordinance with the home occupations as well. Code enforcement, I have a hearing coming up on July the 20th to tear down one of the dharly buildings. This is probably the most important thing on my list and this is the Lipscomb-Stratten project. I've been working with Mr. Warner, who is the engineer out of South Hill that's been assisting the town on this project. He has given me several plots of the Lipscomb-Stratten project. The reason why I have them is because in order to progress forward, there needs to be some easements drawn up and to get the people that would be affected, landowners, to sign those easements. Before we can, I already have the forms for the easement that the landowners can sign, but in order to make sure that we're doing everything correctly, we do need to make sure that the landowners that are listed on the plots are in fact the actual landowners. What I have suggested, there are 33 different parcels that are affected by the Lipscomb-Stratten project. And what I would suggest, given the time restraints Mr. Warner would like to have done ASAP and just some of the complications that we may run into as well as the volume, what I would recommend to town council is to get an outside service that just does title searches, to do these title searches. I can do them if you all want at my regularly, my regular hourly rate, but frankly, I think you all will be saving money by getting someone that does them all the time and can employ more than one person than if I wanted. And I got a quote from Village Title Services out of Palatine and I have, you know, checked, they do have a very good reputation and they would charge $95 per title search, which is cheaper than what I would ultimately charge, I would imagine, given, you know, hourly versus $95 a job. And I would recommend that town council approve that Village Title conduct these title searches. I did have, there was another person that we had used previously for the sewer easement title searches and unfortunately she has gotten a job in-house somewhere and so she couldn't do it. And so that's who she had recommended that I tell you all about to get it done. And then I contacted this person and I've got this quote for you all tonight. And the person at Village Title is aware of our, you know, time restraints, want to get it done as quickly as possible. And she said that, you know, they'd be on it as soon as they could if that's the way you all want to go. And of course, the other way would be, you know, just authorizing me to proceed on it at, you know, my regularly, regular hourly rate, which is 150 an hour.
May I, may I interject here? The planning council meets, the Lipscomb-Stratten meets this coming Thursday morning. Would it not be before we spend any money? I think we need.
Is that part of the project?
Yes, that's what we need to see if that was part of the project and all. And before, you know, before council passes a motion, you know, saying that they're going to pay for this, you know, I would hope maybe that this would be absorbed in the actual grant. So could we just then take this money, I mean this information and Wade or I present it to Earlene and Earl Howerton on Thursday at the meeting?
Okay.
Kelly will be here for the county planner and all that. We do it that way. And then if we need to come back, maybe if you all know that, know about this and if the town has to absorb it, maybe then a vote could be done. You know, if you all understand or.
Do it now and just say, well, not saying, you know, just say, I'm proud of it, but that way if it doesn't Thursday or we do have to do it, David will say, all right, go ahead. Wait the call. Say wait sometime, you can do that.
I would work on that just because David, the engineer said, you know, the sooner the better because I think they're waiting for like one more V-DOT approval or something like that. They're making it, so yeah, the sooner the better, but I'm betting that the grant would cover it because I mean, it's a necessary expense for the project.
I would thought that would be one of the first steps through the project.
So I didn't, you can make.
Just make a motion saying, I make a motion that we accept the $95 per title in case we had to pay for it out of our own pocket. Or somebody knows how to say it, but go ahead. 27 properties?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yes, sir.
It's not necessarily 33 properties, is it?
People. 33 lots.
Lots, okay.
Yes.
Thirty-three lots.
Yeah, and some of those lots maybe own the, you know, the same people, but it's, but each parcel that it's affected would have to have a separate title search because the things are separate from property.
I guess my concern is when we voted for this grant, if this isn't included in the grant itself, if we, when we voted for this grant, at least I was under the impression that all of these costs, our share would be covered under in-kind, not out-of-pocket cash costs. $3,000 is a lot of money for taxpayers to put out. And, you know, this is, it's one $3,000 check, that's fine, but I'm just concerned, are there any other hidden costs that we don't know about going forward?
Question for Perry.
So if this is not covered under the grant, the planning committee can figure that out and let us know pretty quickly before we keep writing checks and then find ourselves in a pot committed to something we weren't expecting. But with that, I'll second Councilman Six's motion to cover the cost of 33, the 33 title searches from Village Title in the event that it's not currently covered in the grant.
Okay, we have a motion that.
I'll second that.
At $95 per title search.
That's the same motion you were saying?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
We have a motion on the floor that the town will cover the cost at $95 a title search for 33 owners if it is not included in the grant. All those in favor, signify by a aye. Any opposed?
Yes, yes. Thank you all very much. With regards to the election, I did see in the minutes from the last meeting we're already, you know, talking with me more. In terms of my legal opinion, which is, you know, in the memo, we can't extend, and we talked about, you know, moving the election terms from May to November. And with regards to, you know, moving it to a presidential election, I don't know. Legally, there would be no problem with that. And if our purpose is to improve voter turnout, you know, then it may help with that. So, you know, that's up to you all, but legally, you know, that would actually be fine. And from my reading, you know, the more voter turnout, the better usually legally at least. But the rest is up to you all. And then regarding Mayor Walpersen's opening comments at the beginning about the prayer and meetings, she is correct. I did some research with a few cases and it looks like what we're going to have to do is invite different denominations to come and say the invocations and instead of council meeting, it needs to be members of the audience. And that's due to the Establishment Clause provision in the First Amendment basically saying that, you know, the government can't endorse a particular religion. So, and thank you, Mayor Walpersen.
Well, that was in the, the BML had sent that out, I think it was Pennsylvania County here in Virginia. And I was so surprised because it was just, what, a little over a week ago? And I came to Wade and said, you know, I don't, I don't want any of us to get in trouble, but I did not want to take the invocation out of this meeting. I thought it is a very important role and so, you know, we will work on opening up to all the community, but in less than a week, we didn't have a week, the Baptist church stepped up, so.
So pledge, okay?
My understanding is that the pledge is fine, but yeah, I mean as far as I know, it should be fine.
I have a question. What is the difference in, say, us endorsing Christianity and somebody outside coming in and doing the same thing? What is, what is the difference?
The difference is that one of the factors that was cited in the Western District of Virginia, Pennsylvania case, see what initially happened was there was an argument and it went all the way up to the Supreme Court. This was the first case. And in the first case, they think that, well, you know, government, you're violating my right to exercise whatever freedom of religion I want, you know, and violating the Establishment Clause by, you know, leading prayer. Well, the factors in the first Supreme Court opinion that were important to the court was that, you know, they were asking Althea before to do it and that, you know, different religious groups were invited to do it. Whereas in the second case, it was led by the members of council and this case was actually the Board of Supervisors and it was more Christian-based. And the difference is, to the court, the difference was that by the council members or the Board of Supervisors members leading the prayers, that it was like an endorsement of that religion. So that was the portion I was trying to add.
My question is, if we're putting it out inviting people, then we do not have any control over if some religious group that we're totally unfamiliar with comes and says, well, we're of this religion, we have to entertain everyone who would volunteer.
That would be my reading of the cases, yes. And then the last item, which I did include in the memory note, Wade and I have been talking about different ways to collect on the liens, local tax liens. And when I say local tax liens, I not only mean, you know, tax liens, I mean the grass cutting liens, personal property liens, dharly building liens, because if you all recall, grass liens and dharly building liens are treated the same under the Virginia code and in all ordinance as, you know, doing with tax liens. So we have been working on that and there are a few other options that we're exploring. And I actually saw in here with the last meeting you all talked about the DMV program and I think that's a great idea to be able to collect liens that way because it gives us more power, you know, than we would normally have to be able to collect liens. And clearly it's more of an issue for people that owes taxes that would force their hand on paying where other methods that we may use may not.
All right, so let's just say it's a grass cutting and we've got multiple cuttings on the property in town and continue to do it year to year. So we can attach a lien against that property for whatever's owed.
Correct.
Can we for-sell that property? Can we for-sell that property?
Yes.
Just like you wouldn't tax it?
Correct, yes.
But you can also go and see the person's wages.
Yes, sir.
That owns that property also.
Then, then we need to know that process too.
Yep.
Yeah, does that cost, or how do we do it, how do we set it up, you know?
I'd be glad to help you all with that, and I've actually done it before with different jurisdictions on that matter, and garnishing wages for a local government is a lot easier and a lot less costly than it is if you were just a regular business because the Virginia Code allows localities not to have to go through the whole court process in order to be able to get the liens. So, it is a lot easier and a lot more cost-effective, but if we can just find out, you know, where these taxes are worked, or another alternative to, instead of garnishing wages, would be to garnish their bank accounts. If we could find out where they bank, we can, you know, do it that way too.
Yeah, well, if you do it that way, we would put a lien on the property too, right?
Well, it depends.
Because if you put a lien on the property, then these get, you have to donate expenses, they have to pay also, right?
Well, but with the lien on the property for a local government purposes, a local government can just go to the courthouse and record a memory of the lien, so it would just be a cost of recording a memory of the lien. The local government, as long as the taxes are being kept, you know, at the hall, it's a lien from the time that it, you know, becomes delinquent, but then you can go to the courthouse and put residual buyers on there just by recording the lien. So, in order to have an effective lien unlike, you know, regular citizens, the local government does not have to go to the, you know, courthouse and get a judgment to have a lien. And the good thing about a local government is that, you know, certain types of debts that are owed, like local taxes, and things that are on that period, like the grass lien and the dairly buildings lien, it's a super priority lien too. And whereas a government lien is as priority.
So, on a property that we have, take the structure there, incur a cost, we can attach, in that case, probably the best thing would be to attach a lien and have the property say.
Yes, sir. Do we have to wait a, a period of time?
That is the kicker, is that in order to sell a building for, and this is with local taxes, but other, we're treated the same way, you know, given the type of lien, you do have to wait two years until after it becomes delinquent in order to sell it or tax it.
And what about garnishing somebody's, say, the grass cutting, that the town has, you know, incurred, say, that the bill might be six, seven hundred dollars, how long do we have to wait before we can garnish, say, their bank account or, or their, you know, their wages?
My understanding is it's certainly not as long, and I have my book with me, there are anticipating questions, so I will look, but I do not think that there's any definitive waiting time. The process is, you know, you get your delinquent accounts. Wade would act in as the treasurer, you have to call upon the taxpayer first and say, hey, you know, this is how much you owe, you have thirty days to pay, or then I'm turning it over to the town attorney or to Gemella, and, you know, they will go about collecting it. And so then, after that point, I could use any mechanism that, you know, any tool that we have in my trustee book here to be able to collect.
So, would that same procedure follow in the case of a foreclosed property where a mortgage company may hold the property?
What do you mean?
Are you going after the mortgage company for intent, we had to maintain the property?
Yeah, if the mortgage company is bounder, then yes, yes.
I, I would encourage counsel that as you get on into the business to, you know, think about this, if you want to give the town manager the authority. I know how he and I sit in his office, and we go over situations, and it's like, when you say two years, well, two years, we'll be gone, you know, we'll all change again, or, you know, phases may be back, but that's such a long time, and, and this is taxpayers' money that is being lost, that, you know, we're, we're paying the employees to do this, we need to recoup this money, and I think if we could, if people really knew that the town of Crewe means business about these things, I think that, you know, they won't call, you know, they won't keep thinking, okay, we'll just let them cut it.
Right, exactly. The other interesting thing that we can do as certain instances too, is what's called a treasurer's lien, where let's say you have a lien on one piece of property for delinquent taxes, and so that person's like, oh, whatever, I just won't sell it, doesn't matter to me, they can sell it. Well, then that person owns some other property in town, and they're selling that property, you can assert a treasurer's lien of those delinquent taxes on that other property, and collect it that way too. So, there's a lot of interesting and effective tools that the legislature, the code of Virginia does give locality that it does not give to, you know, regular people. It's just being able to access the information, like where these people work, where they bank, do they have any other properties, things like that, and then, you know, from there, we can certainly do better with that.
I, I have a question for you too, that it has one thing, it's the age-old town tags. Can town tags be put on utility bills?
That is a good question. Now, what I had specifically researched was can we collect delinquent taxes on utility bills or cut off utilities to collect delinquent taxes? That answer is no. It's nineteen eighty-six or nineteen ninety-six, I turn in general opinion, that says the localities cannot disconnect utilities. I did not, though, look up your question about town tags being put on there, so I can.
Yeah, I have two thoughts coming in, so, also, you and I discussed grass cutting bill, whatever, extra pickup of trash, attaching that to a utility bill. We talked about an existing customer that lives in a residence, and saying you have to pay that bill when we cut the services off completely. Tessie told me, no, we can't do that.
No, you cannot do that, and I would generally take it out, unfortunately, you know, and I guess in the eyes of, you know, what your question was, so, the answer is likely not. You can only cut off utilities if the utilities are delinquent.
Well, I think Sally's thinking on town tags. We've discussed, everybody wants to do away with town tags. Nobody likes them, they would prefer that we didn't have them, but the town needs the income. We've talked about several different ways to do that and not have to deal with it, and one of those was a surcharge on a utility bill and do away with that particular amount of income as a town tag.
And that, that's just an idea.
Whatever that, whatever that number is, I don't know, we'd have to look at it, but a two to three dollar surcharge, for instance, on each bill and do away with the town. I feel like, from what I've heard from citizens, they would prefer doing something that like. I had suggested one time in the poll about an increase in real estate tax to offset that cost, just do it away with the town tags. We're trying to find a way to, to please everybody, and quite frankly, it's a burden on the town as well. It's a burden on the folks that work up there, it's a burden on the police, you know.
Is stickers?
Yes, sir.
So, that's, that's, I think that's what.
Yes, that's what I, I, I didn't know if that was something on a utility bill.
I mean, technically, you don't have to say what it is, it's a surcharge.
Well, another way of looking at that, and I don't know if the finance committee had a chance to look, the DMV program, DMV withholding program that Tessie mentioned and I brought up at the last meeting, but one way we can go about it is to do away with the physical sticker itself and just have a registration fee attached to personal property taxes, and that would eliminate the need to go in and collect, go in and get the physical sticker. You would attach it to the personal property taxes, and then to ensure that the taxes are paid, you use the DMV withholding program, which essentially means that if someone does not pay their taxes, we send their name to the DMV and attach another twenty dollar charge to the, to the individual until they, until they pay, and the DMV puts a hold on their accounts, they can't register their vehicle or their license or what have you.
That's all possible.
That's all part of that program that I brought with the.
I don't think they're gonna do that.
Who?
They're gonna do the twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars, that's what they charge.
That's faster.
And we charge, I have to pay for the twenty dollars.
In fact, the town of Blasto charges forty dollars. They, they send twenty dollars to the, to the DMV and keep twenty dollars for themselves, just to cover their own costs.
That's not delinquent, that's only being on the link.
Delinquent, that's correct. But if we attach it to the personal property taxes, so we charge, what, thirty dollars now, thirty-five dollars?
Thirty.
Thirty dollars for the sticker, we just add that as a registration fee to the personal property tax. If it's not paid, we send it to the DMV, and it's no cost to us until it's actually closed down. It's a cost to the individual who has to then pay their personal property taxes, which they should be doing anyway, and the additional twenty dollar fee or whatever additional we want to charge after that. And that, that'll also help us collect, it's well over a hundred thousand dollars passed due to the town over the past ten years in personal property taxes. That'll, that, using that, that program will help us collect that money as well.
So, that would collect the personal property tax as well as?
Well, we would collect the personal property, we'd have to pay that to get through the DMV would collect.
No, no, the, the, correct, the DMV wouldn't collect anything except the twenty dollars, but the individual who is delinquent would not be able to perform any of their DMV registration functions without paying the personal property tax.
Yes, if it turns into DMV, right?
Yes.
Yes, if it turns into.
Right, and the DMV does not charge us anything until the account's closed down, so until we tell them, okay, you can go ahead and close this one down, that's when we, when we get charged.
So, the.
Exactly. And I, I, like I said, I brought that information up last minute, I'm sure. Perfect. Great, and I believe the town attorney mentioned it as part of liens and such, I believe it only applies to personal property tax. You can't use it for real estate taxes, right? But again, that's just my layman's interpretation of the.
I'll look in that magic book during other parts of the meeting, and then I can use my hand during, continue, and then tell you all the answer. But see, you all have let out my secret, you are just glad I knew it all. That's all, that's all I have unless you all have any more questions.
Counsel, okay.
I don't know, it's just really a question for you, Wade, but if we have a property that we have on our list of, well, dilapidated houses, whatnot, and they are off, they're willing to sell it to us for a low price, would we go ahead, would that be interested? Would we be interested in doing that?
Yes, that would be.
A whole lot cheaper, right?
It would be so long as we had a satisfactory title search on it, because sometimes they would just be selling it to us for cheap, but then we would acquire a property that had a whole bunch of liens on it, but I would certainly advise, you know, if there's no liens on a property that the town could do, then it probably would be cheaper and, you know, a lot more.
Speaking of, of properties, is there any update on the theater, old theater?
We've got to find someone, a contractor, or somebody who would be able to look at that and find out about that low bearing wall. I wouldn't say we'd get the bill inspector to do it, but I'd rather get an independent person that can look at it.
Do you need, do you need the counsel to make a, a motion on that then?
Well, yeah, but the problem is, hey, well, it can come out of the fall.
So, counsel, if you want.
They may not charge us all of them.
But we will need that in the form of a motion.
I really have a suggestion, I want to ask. How about the guy from Balmall? Just call Balmall, see if they think anybody made, whoever does theirs. Of course, you got Darryl.
Is there anyone from Blasto? He was there, he was the same inspector.
Al. Big brother.
Yeah.
Al Ellington.
No, 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 Al Ellington don't enforce town.
No, we just, we just want to know if it's a low, uh, bearing wall, because it's good to turn in, other buildings might come in, you know what I'm saying? Are you partners?
My, my.
But I would move to allow the, to offer as the town manager to have a contractor come in and look at the, the wall that needs looking at.
Okay, we have a motion for the town manager to find a contractor to come in to determine the low bearing wall on the old theater door. Have a second.
I'm also going to suggest that we also have a look at, I can give us two estimates, one for tearing down the building and one for shoring up the walls and clearing it out inside, so we can possibly look at keeping the street scape and using that empty space for something else.
It's supposed to belong to the owner.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor to have the town attorney.
The other thing that you all know is complicated, the one thing I thought about though is since it is another, you know, a private citizen does own it, we're gonna either have to have their permission to go in there and do it, or we're going to have to get a search warrant to go in there and do it, so, just to keep that in mind, unless we can do it from the other side and get the person's permission.
See, that's why we fell in, I don't even use it. That, that building has been condemned by the town inspector, so, I think we just need to go through the, the right process to the owner to say, you know, here's what the building inspector found, and you've got X number of days to get it down, which they're not gonna do probably, and then we get them next time, sort of like we're going through the Hessenale with the East Carolina.
Yep, yep, but, yeah, in order to get someone in there, you know, we would have to get control of it or get a search warrant.
Should we wait until we have control of it? Should we send the letter and ask them to donate it to the town?
Depending on satisfactory title.
Which cost about ninety-five dollars? Or, or, or a hundred fifty dollars then?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we want to?
Well, then, I guess I'll, the new motion should be just to send a letter, ask them to, if they would be interested in donating the property to us, or we continue with the, with the legal process.
But you know you got two options, and that, if you could cost us palimony to do that.
Well, it's, it costs us money.
Palimony, but a palimony doesn't low very long, to shore it up and stuff like that.
Right, oh, sure, sure.
And where we will get the money to do that?
Okay, we have a motion.
You own that fund? You own that fund?
We have, on the demolition, we have a motion to...
Send a letter, seeing if the owner would be willing to donate the property to the town.
After the, after, maybe I spend a search of...
Pending a clean title search.
Clean title search, okay. We have a motion to have the town send a letter to the owner about donating that property after the town does a clean title search of the property.
Did we want to do the title search first and then send the letter, or...
Yeah.
Okay, then yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that the town do a clean title search of the old theater and upon completion, send a letter to the owner asking that the property be donated to the town. All those in favor signify by yes?
I yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
And just one more, the building on four sixty that we discussed, that wasn't in our original?
Uh, yes, the letter I sent was received. We got a response that they were gonna take care of the issues, but they had...
Really? Okay, oh, they want to take care of the issues.
Waiting on, well, town will bring us, uh, the burden of... That's another one.
How, how long until, did, did we give them a...
Forty-five days.
Perfect.
Any other questions for the town attorney?
Okay, we'll go to committee reports. I can only, just, may I answer your question I found it out?
Yes, ma'am.
And that was, there is no time limitation, like, you know, to sell property to, or treasuries, liens, or wages, or they get held to different things.
So you could do it at any point, you're saying?
Yes, that is correct, and to be clear, it is not technically a garnishment. It's an administrative remedy that does not require court action, but it essentially functions the same ways a garnishment.
Steve, cut your rest today, bill payday, check him tomorrow. Is that what you're saying?
I'm telling you my favorite, well, it depends, probably not. But, you know, you would have to go through the steps, because it's a lot quicker than selling the property.
Okay, so counsel, that would be something that you could think about of giving, of allowing the town manager to, maybe there'd be some policy set up so that it wouldn't look like we were doing any type of favoritism. That, you know, that across the board, that at a certain, whether it's a second cut, I mean, it's just a suggestion. And, you know, just think about it, and a second cutting or something that, you know, that then administrate, the term could be used and that the town manager could, you know, would have the authority. He wouldn't have to come each time, you know, or every meeting and revisit this, you know, he would know how to handle it, it would be...
Yeah, I will know for our purposes, but I believe that the Virginia Code does say, you know, over two hundred dollars, so that may be a good...
That's more than cut.
So that may be a good benchmark.
Do you think there'd be any statute limitations on deals?
There are statute limitations on collecting taxes. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, committee reports, economic development.
Uh, thank you, mayor, the economic development committee couldn't meet earlier this month because its chairman had to work. But, Phil, we've combined our July and August meetings and we'll be meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-second, at noon at Diamond Crew, so join us for that meeting. Economic development, uh, the Hundred Mile Yard sale was, uh, was a great success from, from what I understand. I just wanted to personally thank, on behalf of the town, the economic development, economic development committee, Jerry Morton and the Crew area organizer, Daphne Norton, for all their work on, on that. It's always great to see so many people in and around town, buying things, coming into our businesses and buying things, filling up on gas, eating, and enjoying their, their, their day. The Norway Historical Association, and this is really an economic development, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Our cemetery and genealogy committee is currently trying to gather all of the, any information on any old cemeteries, you know, maybe these backyard cemeteries, family cemeteries, that forgotten cemeteries, things that might be back behind individuals' houses in the woods. If you know of any cemeteries, if you would let me know, and we'll, we'll let the, let our committee know, because we're trying to compile all of that information and document it all. And as we know, there's a lot of cemeteries you wouldn't even notice. I mean, going into Blackstone in front of Walmart, there's a couple graves right there. So just any, any information that you have on that, just, just let me know. The Chamber of Commerce is having a chicken fundraiser, and I will get that date at, I'm just hoping Bill will be here tonight. I will get that date, but it's early August, so come support the Chamber. The, we've also applied for a Healthy Eating Active Living grant of nine thousand dollars to, for park improvements to include a kiosk, improvements around the walking trail and the crosswalk. Would all be included in that, oh, in a, yeah, in a bridge going over that ditch and some erosion control for that ditch. Apply for it end of last month. We should hear something back hopefully by our August meeting, maybe a little bit later. They said early August, this one will, we'll find out. So, there's that. The Dead Cowboy that we voted on earlier this year will be on the twenty-fifth of this month. So go out and support, I know Kim from the, right, via the quilt shop. In fact, it has a lot to do with the organization efforts. It's from ten to six at the Amelia Fairgrounds. So go out and support that and go out and have fun, bring the kids, grandkids, the great-grandkids, what have you. Congratulations to Vice Mayor on her retirement. And we do have someone in the audience today who has a birthday, so, not to put anyone on the spot, but happy, uh...
I quit having, see, you see this, don't you?
Happy, uh, happy thirty-second birthday to you, Jim.
Thank you, Phil, I'll remember you.
And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions for the economic development checklist? Okay, I put these as we go around the room, so I would not miss anybody, so I apologize for last month. Okay, finance? Okay, now we're starting a new, new year.
New year.
Yes. Okay, any questions on yours? Okay, public works and infrastructure.
Everything's going good with public works. They have some issues with the electrical, with the backup generators that's being handled and all of that, everything's in good shape.
Any questions with public works and infrastructure? Okay, personnel?
Well, once again, they've gone home, they're probably tired, to Susan, Matthew and Thomas for their good work in that department. Mr. Gunner, I hope you put your picture with a big heading on the front page so the people of Crew will appreciate quality water there. I think, you know, there's still a lot of misconception and so many improvements haven't made. And I do want to thank, as always, our, all of our town workers, especially maintenance people who are outside this time of year. They do a great job.
Any questions for personnel? Okay, you helping safety?
We should have in your packet the six-month not away time registration card. And as you can see, we average two-hundred-and-six calls a month. Four thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty, twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty patient miles, forty-five-hundred-and-twenty-nine man hours. Majority of the calls being answered, anywhere from two to five minutes, which is a total of seventy-eight percent. The rest of them fall in line as you have printed in front of you. As you notice, majority of the calls in the Blackstone area, which is seven-hundred-and-three, Crew is four-thirty-nine, Berford's seventy-one, not away is eighteen, and I'll go back up to the summary. The last line is a remit percentage of transport paid. There are a couple people asking what that means. And as you look at the percentages across the board, that means that the people that have insurance would get recouped that much percentage of the insurance money. And the rest of it, we write off and don't worry about it, but that's, that's what those figures, as you can see. The average is seventy-four percent. Real good recoup. So, but, uh, everything's going pretty well, other than the fact that we just roll every day, as you can probably hear, up and down four sixty or wherever else, and it's a, it's a busy business. Everything got followed, I know the chief's got a few things he wants to report on. His report time coming up by the third of the end.
Any questions? Okay.
Do you all do one of these?
We, yeah, we do.
Okay. Facility case of park and recreation?
Man, we ain't got nothing more. No, we had, uh, we got a lot going on. Uh, we have a state tournament, which is gonna start Friday. The mayor will be there at six o'clock, y'all wanna come watch her first pitch, and, uh, maybe she's been training since last year. And she wants me to let y'all know that I will be doing a commercial on the Bobcat, which will be there airing all the stuff. They play tonight, the Dawlins.
Sunday at six.
They were undefeated, right? San Antonio nine.
Yes.
They, they won two games.
Yeah, I know they won two games. Tonight, they play Blackstone for the second time.
It sounds like they won seventeen to six.
They won seventeen to six. So, we only are one more win away from winning the state tournament, and then we'll be going to New Orleans, to West Monroe, Monroe, wherever the Duck Commander people at.
Is it single elimination or double?
Double.
Okay, great, so they're still undefeated?
Yes, we are three and O, and Blackstone's going home. Appomattox is the only one that is left, and we played under Mark for championship, and we already beat them once. Thirteen to one, thirteen to one, I think.
And those are all brought up on...
No, not that age group. The age group above them, which is Ponytails, um, they are, Crew didn't make it to the state, and they're airing those on the radio, and the way it seems, Al's the business one winning it. Blackstone's automatically in it, and I think they're out. And, um, so we'll be, also be in this state tournament, Crew will. And this is the age, two age groups above the Ponytail.
Very good, great for them.
It's a lot of different names, I don't know. And that should be a great turnout. The way I hear it, it's eleven teams in one division. So that's, I think, last year was two, and the oldest is in eighth, so it's already one more team. And then, I don't even know what the other age group probably is gonna be in there, so that's gonna be great.
This, this weekend?
This weekend.
Any, any questions for parks and recreation?
Oh, yeah, also, if anybody, I'm sorry, if you don't know, make sure y'all go by the War Memorial. The statue is there.
Oh, everybody knows that statue.
Or monument, statue, I forget. Monument is there, but I'll let the mayor talk about it, because she's got it written there. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's all right.
Okay. On community development, Ms. Dalton is on vacation, but I wanted to let you know about Lipscomb and Stratton, that at the last meeting, which was held the third week of June, this coming week, we will again meet on Thursday morning, ten o'clock in this room. Their contracts were awarded and the recommended homes that were listed were all recommended, and the vote was for all, there was, on Lipscomb, there are, I will, I will not at this time read the specific number or address, but there are five homes on Lipscomb and two on Stratton that were built, were bid out. Some will be torn completely down and rebuilt, some will have certain things, you know, improved upon and all. And this is a two-year program. And also, hopefully by, before summer is gone, you will actually see some things be coming down and as soon as they get all the bright ways and everything cleared, and hopefully this meeting this week will, you know, get them doing that. So it has, they've been very active with all the behind-the-scenes work and all, so. Okay, turning it over to Vice Mayor again for the town of Crew comprehensive plan update.
I think Tiffany has handed out another draft. As you know, I guess there's one thing I've learned in local government, or government in general, maybe, everything takes a lot longer than you think it will. It was my intention to have this done in January. But we have, I met with Kelly Lewis and her assistant Logan today, and she assures me that we're moving along much better and much more efficiently than Blackstone, Berford or the county, so I feel better. I need to ask the attorney, once we adopt this as a council, then do we have a public hearing or do we, what are the next steps?
I don't know, but I'm looking up.
Okay, okay, because in the meantime, as I said, this is a draft and we met today. I'd like for you all to read it. I have read it, and there are typos and things like that, that I'll, I'll take care of. We still would like to get some information in here about Mr. Shook's new business, I T S. Logan went by there and was not able to speak to anybody, but they were, when they left me today, they were gonna continue to try to get some of these things. Also, she's gonna try to get some information from the new autism center. We were going to add the trunk or treat as one of the community activities that happens. And she's gonna go back and take some more pictures of the park, in particular, the monument, the, some more pictures of the gazebo and that area. I did find one correction, so on page sixty-one, when she talked about, when they talked about the Christmas parade and the park illumination, they alluded to that being on the same evening, which I think would be a wonderful idea, but it's not accurate how it's done now, so. I'll get them to correct that. So if you would just read through those, depending on how we want to expedite things, the mayor and I discussed whether we want to do a WUP session, doesn't really matter. To me, that would be, what would that date be?
It would be the twenty-seventh of July.
Or wait until the August meeting. But we need to go ahead and, and get it adopted by our group and then move forward with whatever we find out we need to do.
If you all read through it and found corrections, you could, I would, you know, maybe suggest that you make the corrections, write your name on it and on your plan draft, and put it into the Vice Mayor's mailbox. That way she would already have it and knows, then she would know who read through, and she'd have them all back. And then, you know, that way we, we would know that you all have viewed it and have corrected whatever you think needs to correct, and then we can... And then we can come back with the final.
Doesn't take that long to read through.
Sounds like a couple of retirement educators.
That, that, that way, you know, it, it would mean we might not have to have a work session.
Make the darn thing along. Don't put too much in there.
Well, I think it's good as long as.
Keep changing.
Do you have a, do you have a deadline that you want?
Tomorrow. I'm in a hurry.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, perfect.
That way, anything that needs to be done, eventually, once we finalize it, we're gonna get an electronic version because our, one of our purposes here is to update it, um, so that citizens can see the progress that's made. Uh, one thing I would tell you, um, some of that information that has to come from the census is not as current as we would like it to be, but, you know, the census only happens on a set schedule. So, some of it is not as, you know, updated as, as we would prefer, but that would probably have to happen in the next five years. How many do they do a census like ten years, so?
Twenty-five. Does the planning council take the pictures that are in this? I would like to request that they give an updated picture of the rescue squad and it looks a whole lot different.
Okay.
Than it does, yeah, whenever they took this one, which had been back before. And then, two thousand and six.
These are the things that they want us, the, the kind of input they want from us. I will say the pictures look so much better in color than they do in here.
Any other comments for Vice Mayor? I should be thankful on behalf of all of us for all your time and effort that you've given.
Well, and I have to thank, um, Kelly and Logan. They've, um, they have a lot to do and they've worked, um, really hard on it and been very close and have worked with.
I will say just, uh, under town officials, Vice Mayor's Ann Simpson. You may want to change that.
Yeah, like I said, there aren't any typos. Well, I don't know depending on how things go.
Okay, I, I, I pleased you with a little under the weather. Yeah, we, um, please chief's report.
Want to get a, give an update to the citizen complaint we had a couple of months ago. I'll get to him.
Okay.
Uh, in response to citizen complaint for criminal activity in the areas of Indianup Avenue and the library grounds, we have added extra patrols in the afternoon and nighttime hours to monitor these areas. As a result, there have been several curfew trespassing and drug arrests made on or around the library grounds by officers. Over the past week, there's been a decrease in the amount of illegal activity conducted. But in order to keep that activity down, we need to continue with enforcement. Another thing that has been done by the mayor's suggestion was we lock the gates to the playground at dusk and unlock them at dawn. Then nobody has any excuse whatsoever to get in there, to get in there. They have to jump the fence. That has helped a lot, I think. On June twenty-fifth, there was an unusual amount of police activity around town that I'm sure everybody here is well aware of. The reason for the activities was for a search that was being conducted for a suspect that was borned out of North Carolina, of course. We had received information, we being the police department, that the suspect was possibly at a residence on Nelson Street. And due to the suspect making violent threats towards any law enforcement officers, extra precautions were taken by enlisting the assistance of the state police. During such events, we cannot notify everyone around town because of the nature of the event and the constant changes of information received throughout the process. There's also proper planning, documentation, and that's been conducted throughout. If we ever feel there is an immediate threat to the citizens, business owners, or employees, or anyone around town, we will make sure notification will be given to these individuals and proper precautions and safety measures will be taken. If any of you have any questions when we have an event like this in town, when it's done and over, please feel free to contact me. Ask any and all the questions you wanna ask. If I can answer them, I will definitely answer them. I will be glad to give you a briefing on what occurred. I'll leave it at that. Uh, town stickers, that was a topic that came up earlier.
Yes, I, I asked him to please provide some information of what the, what the police by law can do.
From May until July, the Blue Police Department has issued forty tickets for no-town stickers, which is an average of thirteen tickets over the past three months. We are constantly on the lookout for these violations and have no breaks or warnings for anyone who is in violation. We would, I would like to remind council that we cannot go on private property to enforce this ordinance. The vehicle must be on public property. We can stop them for traveling down the road or if they're parked in front of their residence on one of these sad streets. As long as it's on the street, we can enforce it. If the vehicle is in their yard, we cannot enforce it. So, all of these forty tickets have been enforced on public property. On July second, Detective Turner and I met with an architect and a consultant from an architectural company based out of Richmond called Three North in reference to the need for a new police department. They came down and met with us at the police department to get an assessment of what we may or may not need for an up-to-date functioning police station. They're conducting this assessment at no cost and will providing us with a report with their findings and recommendations to bring our current office, if needed, up to date. As my hope status report for the next council meeting, August. They went around and they looked at the old fire station, they looked at the old river building, they looked at some vacant properties. They had a general idea that they went all around the town. They were very helpful, very, and they're very mindful that, you know, the town doesn't have millions of dollars to spend on a police department. To add to that, the mayor and myself and along with Sergeant went down and did a tour of the Blackstone place tomorrow to give, to give you a visual idea of what is actually needed to do our job. If any of you guys wanna go down there and look, just let me know. I'd be happy to take you down there. We can walk through, they gave us free reign of the building, so walk through and ask all the questions you wanna ask. And it, it gives you a visual picture of what we actually, compared to what we have. National Night Out. The police department will be holding our annual National Night Out event on Saturday, August eighth. We have moved it from the Tuesday to the Saturday. And hopes to get more, even more participants to come out. We had to send in a letter and get this approved by the National Night Out Committee and they approved it. So, we'll be on August eighth. The event will start at five P M. and we'll be showing a movie on the lawn at Dark. As in previous years, we'll be providing hot dogs and hamburgers along with activities with kids. Everyone is invited and we look forward to seeing everyone there. Finally, Officer Lafferty. He graduated from the police academy on June seventeenth and started his control duties with us on June ninth. E C J S requires that he complete at least one hundred hours on-the-job training before he can be released on patrol on his own, provided enough of the training is needed. Officer Lafferty is a Nodaway graduate and currently resides in the county.
Yes.
This is the start of his career in law enforcement and he has no prior experience until now. He did very well in the academy and received all of his training records, test scores. And he did very well. He's been doing very well within his F T O program. And today was his first day, kinda, on his own.
Some loyal.
But this is Officer Lafferty, our newest officer.
So, thanks for the everybody.
Congratulations. I'm especially proud of you.
That's it.
Okay, do you have any questions for the?
Just a couple of quick, uh, mayor. Um, well, for Officer Lafferty, uh, you live in the county. We do have plenty of places in town if you want to move, uh, here. I'm sure, uh, former mayor Lou Simmons will help you find a house and.
Well, see, y'all know wild pigs and chickens in the town, so.
Or hubbybees.
Might be a lawman or a brave one if I work somewhere.
Oh, uh, but, uh, on more serious note, um, regarding the communication with, uh, during major events, uh, like, or, that may not be a major event, but during major events.
Looked like, it definitely looked like.
Right, right, exactly, which optics is, is everything. Is it possible to have just, uh, an, an initial email sent or code red sent to the, uh, the town officials? And, uh, possibly a situation report, every shift change, even if it's just no update? Just so we can be informed because my information all came from Facebook.
He, he put it on, you know, you, you contacted me, but he, he had all the information.
And that was a mistake.
In, um, on, but, um.
Right, but if it's out there publicly and all we know is what's being, then to the general public, we can't answer questions knowledgeably when they help when they come up?
Uh, probably, and I don't shoot you for this, mayor. I inform the mayor of everything that we do. If she feels like that is something that needs to be done, then I leave that up to her.
Okay, that'll work.
And I, the process took longer than what they thought was going to happen and they got help that they did not know they were going to get. So, that, and so he came out and on Facebook then put as much as he could at that point.
Right.
And, uh, and, I mean, up to the, up to the actual point, it's a little hard to let everybody know that something's gonna happen, but it's gotta be a secret.
Well, I haven't seen.
Something I would be willing to do is after the event.
Right.
If you would like me to send an email out to give a briefing of just the facts.
That would be perfect, right. Right, and, and I know you guys, uh, you know, write the press releases and send them, just send it to us as well so we have.
And I felt, when you, when you sent the email, I felt like he already had on the Facebook at that point, everything that, so it was like, you know, that was all for the situation of that.
Just, just so we can maintain some, some type of situational awareness.
Again, and the chief's, the feds, the chief, the other chief here can attest to this. A lot of times it causes more problems than it does anything else, but you got people to listen to. And you don't wanna be showing up on Nelson Street when something's going on or at a fire because people, you know, scare.
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, give us some sort of situational awareness.
Yeah, that might after the event.
That's planning time. And I will say, I will say this, if there's any doubt in anybody's mind, reference to the event, before everything went down, town was well protected by the state police and our police department. It wouldn't like anybody's life was in danger except maybe the person they might have been looking for.
It, it definitely looked a lot worse than what it actually was.
Right.
And I apologize.
Well, and I thank the chief because I had come home from vacation and got rumors that it was at one of our properties. I didn't ask any questions other than, do I need to worry? And he very kindly said, no, and I said, thank you.
And get you going.
Yeah, well, no, and go back out of town.
But, you know, I, I, I can't stress the problem. Please feel free to ask any questions.
Going along on his report too about visiting, uh, a police department. I had never been in another police department except for the one that's in the Town of Crew. If you have not been to one, it is well worth letting the chief know and make an arrangements to go see. Now, what we, we didn't go down there saying, we needed this, we needed that, we needed everything we saw. But it gives you a perspective of what, uh, for my side, what a police station actually should look like compared to what I see on T V. I mean, that, face it, or in the movies, that's my perception. And it was, it was very, very informative and to walk through and with, with he and Sergeant Hight went to saying, well, you know, we don't need all this, but, but this is what, you know, what is needed and what comes from the state and the various procedures of how something is handled from where, you know, a suspect is brought in all the way through. It, it, it was, it was very, very informative and it's so, you know, close at hand. It's not like you gotta take a whole day. And all, it, um, I really encourage you, you know, to, you know, make the, the time and get with the chief or myself and, you know, we make arrangements for you to do that if you haven't had an opportunity to visit a police station. Okay, my report, my report is gonna be very, very, uh, short. I, the first thing is I wanted to thank the volunteers, the fire, the rescue, the police, uh, for what, um, between the sirens and all that we hear around town and all that, um, I, I really appreciate what you do for our community. Uh, Steve has already said that, um, Friday, six o'clock, the, um, the girls' district softball tournament will start over at Hackney Field. This means, this means families coming into our town and all and, um, it's a plus. It always seems to be so happy and, you know, exciting and, um, and when you say there's nothing for our young people to do, it, it just shows that there is and, and it's such a positive way, um, for, um, the children and their families and even, you know, the older ones in the community to come out and have a good time. Also along this note was, um, I was really excited when I walked the dog this weekend. I looked over and I saw that they had, that Simmons Monument was over there and they had, uh, placed the, um, the, um, the stone. And there's also a bench that was placed over, um, if you're looking at our house to the right, that, um, people who come and, you know, want to sit or something can, can sit there, you know, for a while to, to look at it and all. And I'm sure this is just part of the beginning. They'll be doing some more landscaping because of town plan and grass, but I, I'm real happy to see that. Don't forget our, um, our night out. Um, I thank you all for all the things you do. And while, um, all of you stole my thunder, that's why you put me at the end. When Phil congratulated our Vice Mayor, I had thought, 'cause we're starting a new, this is a new turn, new year for our second year of our term, that during the last term, from the time we went into office last year to now, there were two others on, at this table that also retired from their permanent, um, jobs that they had dedicated their lives to. And Al and Robbie both have, um, retired. And now Ann and I, I think, I'm so thankful that you all are here, you know, giving your time to the town and, uh, we appreciate it. And I, I just think that speaks highly. You all could have just decided, well, this was the year we're going to retire and I'm just gonna go off. So, thank you. If you all have any questions for me, that's.
Just that via the memorial, um, are they planning a dedication there?
I, I would think that, yeah.
Okay, and if they want me to reach out to anyone in Richmond to maybe participate in that. Make some contacts. Just have them let me know.
I know they were looking for someone from each, uh, military, um, he's serviced, so.
Okay, so we'll let you be the contact person that, that they can give to Phil, okay? Okay? New business?
Uh, just one quick piece of new business. Well, it's a question and then we just, uh, when we have large amounts of money in reserve funds, um, are they just in a, in the, sitting in the bank collecting whatever the normal back interest is?
That's all you can do.
Okay. That's, we can't take some of that and put it into an investment, a C D or something? That doesn't sound right. I know the county just put four point seven million dollars in the one-year C D at four point seven percent interest.
Yeah, I mean, it's a CD of some sort.
Right, right, that's, that's, that's what I mean. Oh, yeah, I know, I know there's a lot of... But I know that we have, our waterline reserve fund is a pretty high number. I think we're at a hundred, over 150,000. If we can take that, take some of that and invest it, as long as we don't need it too liquid right now, maybe that's something our finance committee could look at. Just because sitting in the bank, you have to want to flex whatever interest, but if we put it in a CD, it flexes a little more interest than if it's sitting there for the same amount of time. Might as well collect as much as possible. Exactly.
So finance will let you, okay, along with the town manager. Any other new business? Okay, continuing business. The items that I listed under continuing business were things that we had talked about that we had not come to a completion of. I know that Tessie has talked about a lot of them already coming down. The, A is the zoning ordinance changes, and I believe she has said that she asked for permission, and I do not think that you all have given her the zoning, the permission to go over the zoning. How do you feel about this?
Well, specifically related to the zoning ordinance changes in residential areas, I had gotten the changes from the zoning committee on the residential area changes that were going to be made, and I have responded to the zoning committee. One of the proposals was to merge R2 and R3 zoning, and I said, "Yes, you can do this. We will just need to be sure that all these setbacks, et cetera, are harmonized." You know, that we're all on the same page with that, and there's no, you know, differences between them. And then also we'll need, when, when it comes time to make those changes, if that's what the council desires, we'll need to have basically two public hearings on that to change, a public hearing to change the zoning map, to say, you know, one ordinance. And there will also need to be a public hearing to change the textual part of the zoning ordinance as well.
That, that you referred to earlier?
This is specifically relating to the proposals from the zoning committee.
We're talking about the exception things.
Yeah. Yeah.
What you mentioned earlier.
On the home occupation? General zoning, yes, yeah, if you all would like to...
Is it something you can give an example of, what you're talking about? And where, where did you see this and compare ours to it and see that ours was out there?
Where I specifically got it from was MUNICODE's remarks when they were going through, because they do keep up with, you know, the most current codes and things like that. And it was actually MUNICODE that pointed it out to me that it probably needed to have, you know, go over and check it out.
I mean, what started this whole discussion, as y'all know, was requests to allow certain in-home ordinances, such as, and I think we've gotten off that subject way off track.
Well, I...
It's part of the total discussion, but I kinda like to resolve that issue first.
Well, I have proposed again to the zoning committee, you know, the home occupation and the ordinance and changes and things like that. So that would be, you know, in my mind, that's something separate from the, the zoning ordinance overhaul actually came in response to MUNICODE. But then the, in my mind, the town has three issues, zoning issues going on. Number one is the home occupation, which I think can be, you know, swiftly resolved by hopefully one more meeting that the zoning committee with the revisions of the definition of home occupation and hopefully wrap it up. The second was the zoning committee's response to the home occupation change, which the home occupation change, I already have the proposed, you know, definition and change to the ordinance. So I'm hoping we can go ahead and get that wrapped up. But, you know, as long as you all desire that and the zoning committee school with it, everybody's good. The second issue is the rezoning committee's proposal dated June the 3rd, 2015, that I had received. And what that was, was, I believe, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, was a response to, you know, the request for the home occupation change and the rezoning committee kinda being like, "Well, wait a minute, you know, maybe there's some other things we need to be doing here." And then with that, they make a, a proposal regarding merging some zoning and, you know, providing all one to include other things.
I, I got a question for you on that. Have you seen, in your research, have you seen anything where people have just made R2 and R1s?
I, what I researched is anything that would pivot that, and I don't think that anything would pivot any zoning. Now, most zoning ordinances, those, you know, do have like the different arms of zoning, like usually R2 and R1 and things like that, you know, with the different pieces.
I don't wanna speak for the entire committee, but I think what our intent was, looking at the zoning, we, we also recognized the need for a major overhaul with our zoning ordinances, and that's just something that we came up with pretty quickly in that meeting. So I think that can be merged into the overall zoning overhaul. But I do agree that we should get the initial thing worked out, the, the, the other concern worked out, because there are people who do need to operate their business, who are either not able to do it or are doing it illegally. So I, I would recommend that we get that taken care of pretty swiftly.
And that portion of it, as far as, you know, for my job is concerned, I do have the proposed, you know, textual changes and then the definitions, things like that. So it's just a matter of, you know, getting it to the proper people to operate.
We can split that off, kind of separate, I think, and I'd like to do that in that committee. So we can go ahead and get that resolved.
Yep.
Now, this, now this goes to the planning committee, like?
That would be to the planning commission.
Once we pay it, we send it to the planning? Yeah.
Correct, and here is, here are, here were my original proposals on that and then I'll give it to you after the meeting. And then there wasn't an issue that I've ever said with the recent state of legality, if that makes any sense. Maybe it's getting late. With regard to my original home occupation definition, had the word "family" in it, and, you know, when Phil had read it, he had, you know, we had both agreed that, you know, given the current state of things, that may create a sticky situation. So just kinda ironing that out, which I think that I have done that too. So I'll give this to you after, and then, you know, you all can get the mail, because I need to do it. But we should be good on that. And then, really, my thing about zoning, for me, the only thing I was proposing is just to make it current with the Virginia code, like more technical changes. For me, I don't feel like my job as an attorney is to get into the content changes. I can offer you all opinions on the legality of merging, you know, different districts, but certainly, you know, that wouldn't be anything I would do, and I wouldn't want you all to waste your money getting me to do that. What my proposal was with the zoning ordinance was simply making sure it complied with the state code. Yep, so, and then everything else, if you all wanna change it and just ask me for the legality, you know, I'd be glad to do that. But I certainly don't know enough about, you know, the logistics of the town and things like that to be able to make an informed decision on that stuff.
Any other comments on the, the ordinance? Okay, the, the HDLA grant update. One of, I believe, the gentleman will come in August to speak to council about it and better explain about the monies that are, that will be awarded to us and what we get for those monies and any additional monies that they feel that, that is needed, what we would get for that, and then council can decide if, you know, how much you want to take, you know, and, and put into it, along with, you know, if it's just in-kind or actual dollars.
One of the stipulations of the grant was a 50-50 in-plan match. So that raised some questions, of course. Does that mean we have to come over $400, $400? Yes, but how much of that can be in-kind work? Those are the questions that we'll, he'll answer in the next one.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause I know, I know that the town manager got repeated calls from, from Mr. Farley wanting to know dollar amounts and, and that we would come up with. And we first wanted to know what, what is it you want the dollars for? I mean, you know, it's hard to go say, "Well, oh, yeah, we'll just give you X number of dollars," and we have no idea what specifically it will involve. I mean, I want to know...
And I wasn't gonna bring that to you all unless we had that.
So he, he will come, he will come, couldn't come tonight, so he will come and all this and all that. Any other questions on that? Okay, changing town elections from the spring to fall, any?
I think it's... Look, I, I have concern about that. You know, with elections being in May, the number of people to come, which you know, are we after numbers, or are we after people that are really concerned about the government that's going on there? In other words, it's safety hazard in the presidential election. You'd be pulling all these people in, coming in, especially people in this locality. They'd be voting, they might not even know who Robbie Knight is or Al Simpson is. You know, that's what I'm saying. I'm thinking certain people vote for voting, and we have our own crosswalk.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a good idea because of the higher likelihood turnout. Presidential elections in town here, if that's 70% turnout. Next task, I think, is gubernatorial elections, followed by the midterm elections, and then 2011 is just, or, I'm just thinking, the, the off-year isn't very high. As far as, then, all those, all elections are higher than mayoral election turnout. But presidential election is, like I say, if that's 70% turnout.
Okay, now, you, you realize it won't fall in every presidential election. If we have two-year terms...
Right, it'll be presidential and midterm election here, unless we alternate it, so it's gubernatorial and off-year election. Or unless we extend the, the term from two to four years.
You could do that, but legally I don't know of any way that you could alternate it at this point in time to make it gubernatorial and off. I think that according to my reading of the state code, you can just enlarge the current term, the six months until the minimum.
Unless we hold two elections, one in next May and then one in, or one, one in May and then one in, no, no. The following November, it would be 2017. We just shorten the term of the next elected body.
I don't think from my reading that that's the most, but I can look again and see it if it comes up. But I don't think that it is. Anybody else have any input? Do we have a figure of how much money we could save?
We thought it was $20, $20 if that, because we want to pay, well, we want to pay some off, we, yeah. Even if we have to impress it much, we're trying to work it out.
I know Miss Stewart would be happy if we could do that. I don't have to do it anyways, I really don't.
And also, going along with Constance Knight's train of thought, it would also, sure, some people would not be informed voters, but you get that in any election. But it would encourage some voters who only come out for big elections to become more informed about vote elections, because they know that they're gonna be voting on vocal officials.
What, what kind of percentage did they have?
Lasts...
The last election, we had, the council?
Uh, I think they had about 250.
230, 212.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was about 225, 250.
Yeah, 211, huh? Whoa, I have my laptop on that, all the numbers for other reasons. Yeah, but it would definitely just turn out. Well, it, it saves money and it, and it encourages voter turnout.
So Tessie, what you're saying is just, uh, what's staying we're gonna do?
You all tell me what to do, and I'll make sure it's legal and make sure you get your vote.
Not that easy, that often, is it?
I'm just making it sound easy. It's really not that easy.
I can't believe we don't have to do something.
Well, you all do have to do things, but, you know, I'll tell you what you need to do. Basically, you have to have a public hearing, and then we have to get, but it's not as hard as I thought it was going to initially be. I thought that we were gonna have to get permission from the House of Delegates to change the charter. But then when I talked to the Virginia State Board of Elections, there's an attorney there that's always really helpful, and he said that we didn't have to do that. So it would just be a public hearing and amended the, amending the current ordinance that we have on the votes. So it changed the term from May to November. And then it would be from there, submitting it, and getting with Mrs. Stewart about it and making sure that the State Board of Elections...
Any other comments from council?
I would be interested in hearing what the public has to think, has to say about it. If there's anyone who wants to voice their opinion during our public comments session.
It's cold in Oklahoma.
No, it's early November.
I don't know. I'd like to make a motion, but we just leave it in spring, it's too much.
We have a motion to leave the election in spring and a second. All those in favor, let's do roll call. That way... Sis?
No.
Yes.
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 I mean, that, that doesn't necessarily mean we can't bring it up again now.
Oh, you can bring it up again, won't you?
Sure, okay. It's good, good to know the straw is strong, pull it up.
Four or two.
Four or two. Two N's and two K's. All right, moving on. We, collection of debt owed for grass yard and demolition. The town attorney has briefed us very thoroughly on that, and we have had a chance to ask for questions. Do you all have any comments, additional comments, any?
Well, I, I certainly think that we owe it to the citizens to use whatever measures we can to aggressively recover these costs from the financial, obvious financial aspect there. But also, these properties are negatively affecting our opportunities to grow. And maybe that's an even more important part of it, because as people visit our town and they see that, those properties that are in bad repair and they see tall grass, they don't see this as a place of economic growth or recreation or any, any other positive way. So I think we owe it to everyone to pursue whatever we can to collect it.
And there is a statute of limitations on it. Is that what you said?
Yes, but it's all longer. I want to say it's five years.
Yeah, that's good. We're, we're good to go on that.
I'm sure there's plenty of problems that fall in.
I mean, I still got a lot, but...
Any other comments from the council? Okay, any other continuing business?
I would just renew my request that the finance committee, town manager and town attorney look at that DMP withholding program.
And it is just personal property taxes and vehicles. I'm going, anybody else on council? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to public comments. Yes, sir?
I have a question about the election. Y'all were elected to two-year term. And I know you voted for him, but if you decided later to go to the November, it means that the group here would have an extra six months or whatever. You weren't elected for two and a half years, you were elected for two years. That sounds to me like that's not, there's something missed. I have no problem with it, but it doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's something not kosher there.
It's actually in the state code that that's the mechanism that you would use as extending the term until November. And I mean, I agree, I was telling, huh, but yeah, that's what the law says.
Obviously, Berman did it.
And they did it, and Berman, apparently, they did it with, just not a lot of fanfare. I don't even know if they had a public hearing today, truth. I don't think they had a public hearing, I think they just did it. Okay. One other question.
Yes, sir.
What police station did you all visit? Blackstone. That's what I thought.
And if you haven't been down there, I would recommend, you know, that it is, yeah, it's very interesting. I guess because I've never been at police stations, it was a learning experience, an education, very much so.
I am.
Blackstone have a hold of itself.
Two.
Yep.
Yes. Any other comments from the public? We thank you so much for coming.
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's talking about activities going on in Creve. The third Saturday in September, the Southside Virginia Farmers Association will be having their convention at the Bed Open Park and the public is invited to watch the competition between the fire departments and there'll be a lot of fire trucks over there too, so. And I need to ask, parade, there will be a parade, I need y'all's permission to come through there with the boat, 100 trucks and give it up. I'll be with you, I ain't gonna say 100, I'm exaggerating, probably 30, 45 trucks going through.
Awesome.
Downtown or...
Downtown, yeah.
Last time you came up with, you came up, because I found my pictures finally, I was looking for my pictures of that thing, finally found them. You came down West Carolina and turned and then went back up to Hooper Park.
Back to Hooper Park.
Yes, and all that. That was the route that you took then.
Right, we'll probably do that again, begin with Wade on that. But everybody was talking about the activities going on.
And I apologize, I talked about it last month.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
It's an awesome day.
Yes.
So, anyway.
How long has the convention been, a year?
Probably it's been about 10, 12 years.
I think it was 2006, 2007.
It's, what it, how it dictates where the convention is, the outgoing president is hosting the convention and Walter Drew is the president of the association right now. He's going out, so that means Crew takes the, plays the convention. It'll be the third one we had.
Third one.
This'll be the third one.
You got the boys in training?
Getting ready to.
And it's a neat thing for the little generations, the grandchildren and all to come see too to see the activities and the competition and all that and then the ladder trucks all up in the air and all, it's so impressive. You don't realize how tall some of them are until you're standing down there on the ground and you look up.
But either way, everybody's invited to come watch the competition. A lot of the fire departments take it very seriously and some don't, you know, some just have fun, but some are, but take it very serious.
That's true.
We're gonna be serious. We're usually not real serious, but we're gonna be serious this year.
I think y'all won it, y'all won it for 2016.
Yeah, last time we had a convention in Creve, we placed an airplane. Hope we can do it again.
Any other public comments? Okay, may I have a motion for adjournment?
To move.
Okay, it's been moved and settled that we adjourn. All those in favor, sing for the aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.